Thank you. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a regular section of the Boot and Township Board of Education held for the purpose of transacting appropriate board business in compliance with Chapter 231, laws of 1975, the notice of this meeting is advertised in the Mars Daily Record. Copies of the agenda of this meeting are appropriately posted and made available to the public. Mrs. Barnock?
Here.
Mr. Brandner?
Here.
Mrs. Cabana? Mr. Chen? Mrs. Hermy?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Lavar?
Here.
Mrs. McBride?
Here.
Bill Wickham?
Here.
Also present, Dr. Angelillo Superintendent Principal. We have Anna C. Madison, our student representative, and we have a forum. Great, thank you. Please stand for the question, please. I quite clearly salute this flyer by the NJSLA American Union to their fellow forces and one nation under God, in its role of liberty and justice for all. First on our agenda is Ms. Lee, our auditor from the Skobachian Company. If I pronounced that right, who's going to give us a presentation on our order? Or the conference of financial.
I'll share.
I have a mic on your left there.
I mean, my voice is loud enough unless you need it for the event.
Thank you.
Well, first off, thank you for letting me come early for this. I really appreciate that. In my life, alright, thank you. Okay, so tonight I'm going to go over the financial highlights of the Order Financial Session 630/23, and if you have any questions, any points, please feel free to ask me. So as you can see on page one of the summary that I just handed out, on the top of the page, there's a comparison of the fund balance from 630/23 to 630/22. At 630/23, your overall fund balance is $3.9 million. Most of that is restricted in various reserves. You have $233,000 in conferences, which are goods in your order, place your order at 630 to have them received at as of that date. $1.96 million in capital reserve. That's a, you know, healthy number to have, especially if you're considering, you know, in the future going up for bonding or any project that will help boost your bond rating. $350,000 in maintenance reserve that you can use for any required maintenance. $56,000 in unemployment compensation that you can use for any unemployment claims. $563,000 in current year excess surplus. That's you have to use in your 2425 budget, which is the budget coming up in the spring. Prior excess surplus of $280,000 that you're using right now in your 2324 budget year. And the unassigned fund balance is $463,000. And I just want to point out that just want to point out that the cap on that in the last couple of years was the state raised it to 4%. It's now brought back down to 2%. So that's why you see that decrease. And as well as the increase in the current year excess surplus is because of that as well, because you're going from the 4% to the 2%. So if you jump down to the bottom, you can see, you know, the trend. In 2223, you use the 583, an additional 186 of the prior extraordinary and non-public transportation aid, 280 in 2324, and then 2425, the prior 63. So the jump, like as I mentioned, is because of the drop from the 4% to 2%. Any questions so far?
Yeah, there's one.
Yes.
I don't know if it's, sorry, for you, John, what's the jump in the current year excess surplus from June 30th, '22 to '23? It just went from 280,000 to 563,000, 280,000 to 3,000.
Oh, that was what I was trying to, um...
Sorry, did I miss that?
Yeah. Sorry, maybe I was speaking too fast. So in the past two years, the state allowed you had a raise of floor, or the ceiling on the unassigned fund balance from 2% to 4%. So in the 630/23 year end, they lowered back down to 2%. So if you look on the unassigned fund balance, you see there's a, if you look, uh...
It's a change in buckets, is what it is?
Basically.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, so basically, the state allowed us to keep 4% in there, which we did, and then the state now lowered it to 2%, which automatically threw us over that excess.
Got it, I get it now. Sorry, I didn't pick up on it.
That's alright. Okay, and then the middle section just explains, you know, the overall $600,000 increase in fund balance. And as part of that is the, you had some prior year tuition refunds that you received during the year, the excess in extraordinary aid and non-public transportation aid that you've got, some unexpendable budget appropriation, and also because, you know, last couple of years, you've had the additional grant funding for your ESTOR funds. That, you know, helped with increasing the fund balance as well. Okay? And then if you flip over to the back of the page, summary page, it's just a week, the top is a week capital, capital user. I'm not going to go into any details unless you have any questions on that. The middle section, comparison activities in the food service fund, which is your milk fund, and then the bottom is your long-term liabilities and for budgeting purposes, you know, it's really just your finance purchases for your school buses. So at the end of the year, you have 630/23, you still have $33,000 outstanding, yes?
The relatively speaking large increase of net pension liability?
Mm-hmm.
Can you talk about that?
Sure. So the state calculates that number every single year. So it's almost a capture. Some year it goes down 30%, some years it goes up 30%. And there's a lot of factors that go into how they calculate it, including mortality rates and health care trends and interest rates, discount rates and all of that. So if any of those one factor changes, it can go up or down.
But the main thing is it has no bearing on our financial status.
Yes.
It's really a number that the state throws out.
Yes.
Where we have to report.
Okay, so that's it for the numbers, and in terms of recommendations, or no formal recommendations, because your financial institution always goes in, you know, wonderful chapter here. That's it for my presentation, unless you have any further questions?
Um, in the larger budget, there was a paragraph in there about being unable to calculate the total sum of money being paid to a vendor throughout the year to see if it's below or above the $44,000 cap as a qualified purchasing agent can bid. So I'm wondering how you were able to spot check how much we're sending to a particular vendor?
Well, your accounting software is able to provide a summary by vendor of how much is paid to each vendor during the year. So that's how we, you know, make our selection, if there's anything above the $44,000.
Uh, I'll have to go back and find it.
I'm not sure where you refer into.
What's the question?
Well, the question is how do we know how much we've sent to each vendor throughout the course of the year? And whether or not it went above that limit? I'll go back and find it and circle back with you later, because it'll take me a few minutes.
Yeah, we look at POs. Some things we can go over that with state contracts, with co-op purchases. Anything above that, usually the board approve it. So the board will show that purchase over $44,000. But there are vendors, you have architects, you have others that go over there.
Right.
Every purchase, every purchase order has to comply with purchasing laws if you go over that $44,000.
You tag every vendor that you have in the first order?
Yeah, the system will kick out, it'll tell us. You know, you have to tag it as a state contract vendor or co-op vendor. Then you're allowed, there are certain parameters for that bid threshold. If you go over the $44,000, you know you're going to go over, you have to bid. If you use a co-op, you don't, for a state contract, you don't have to bid. So they spot check those based on a vendor list that we give them before they even arrive on site. So they'll pick and choose based on what they see, and they might pick something and they see a vendor that's over, and then we have to justify why, you know, did it legally go over? So if there are no recommendations, obviously it's a good bid.
Uh, there was some open balances, they were nominal, but we ended up closing those out?
Yeah, they have to be closed down by October. We usually shut those down.
Alright.
And it might be for a reason that something didn't get delivered, it was a back order. At that point, we make a decision to cancel it, it'll never come. Or sometimes we receive things in, you know, August, September, October. We have to make that decision at that point.
Got it.
Any other questions?
I'm just curious of the current year excess surplus that is to be used by the end of the 2324, so, which one, the 563, the current year excess?
2425.
2425, in your next budget cycle.
Now, if it's not used within that time period, it's reallocated to a different...
Well, you have to anticipate as a revenue item in the 2425 year. If the budget software is automatically going to force you to do that.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much for your presentation.
Well, happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
You too, thank you. Okay, that brings us to the board of representatives.
Hi. Um, fall sports are almost over, winter sports beginning after Thanksgiving break. The football team won 35 to 14 against Hawthorne in the North Jersey Section 1 Group 1 game on November 10th. They move on to play Chabas on Friday at the turf for the semifinal round of the Group 1 tournament. Girls soccer won 3 to 1 against New Providence on November 6th in the North Jersey Section 2 Group 1 final. They also won 4 to 2 against Point Pleasant Beach on November 12th in the Group 1 tournament. Boys soccer won 1 to 0 against Wildwood on November 4th in the North Jersey Section 1 Group 1 final. Yesterday, the junior girls played against the senior girls in the annual powder puff game. The seniors won with a score of 21 to 14. The fall drama production is closed. Opening show is Friday at 7:00 p.m. More shows are on Saturday at 7:00 p.m. and Sunday at 1:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m. All seats are $13, so make sure to order them online before they sell out. The Holiday Band Concert is December 6th at 7:30 p.m., and the Holiday Choir Concert is December 14th at 7:30 p.m. Thanksgiving break starts next week with a half day on Wednesday, November 22nd, and no school Thursday and Friday. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And as always, if you have somewhere else you need to be, like a work or something else, we will have the attendants. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks.
And that brings us to Board Business Motion Number One. May I make a motion, please?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion? If not, the questions on the adoption of Board Business Motion Number One, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Any objections? That brings us to administrative reports, starting with the Business Administrator Board Secretary's Report. Mr. Murray?
Okay, just a couple of items. As you know, on November 7th, we had an election which encompassed the school board election as well. The results are as follows. Mrs. McBride received 674 votes, Mrs. Cabana, 721 votes, Mr. Mills, 643 votes, and Mrs. Lavar, 574 votes, and there are also 52, I guess, various write-ins. So the winners, Mrs. Cabana, McBride, and Mr. Mills will be sworn in at the January 3 reorganization meeting. Fall reports, as you know, every fall, we have the DRTRS, which is the District Report of Transport Resident Students, and the ASSA, which is the Application for State School Aid, and that's what our state aid is based on, those numbers. So the DRTRS was already filed by the November 15 deadline, and the ASSA is due in December, so we're working to look at all those numbers with how to district placements, charter schools, Mountain Lakes, just trying to confirm all those numbers. And again, all the schools have to, their reports have to jive. Referendum planning, the architect is still hopeful, I spoke to him today, that we will receive the PDC letter sometime in December. He was on the phone with Trenton today, and they are actually reviewing our files and our applications. We're also discussing public relations campaign to continue providing the public with referendum information as we move forward. We're still working on the 2425 budget. We're holding regular meetings with the administration to look at budget development for staffing, for facility programming needs and so forth. And the audit presentation, now that it has been presented and the board accepts it, will file with the state before the December 15 deadline. So that's all I have to report.
Thank you very much, and that brings us to the superintendent's report.
Okay, good evening, everyone. On Monday, we had an assembly for our 5th through 8th grade students with Sergeant Tom Rich, who's from Summit, the Summit Police Department, but who travels all over the country and actually into Canada as well, presenting on cyber safety. It was a phenomenal presentation to our kids. We had that in two sections for 5th and 6th, and then 7th and 8th, with some questions that followed. And then Sergeant Rich joined us with some parents that were present here in the evening on that Monday, this past Monday, for a follow-up. So it just, he helps to reinforce the messages that we're constantly working on with kids about responsible use of social media and their various devices and know how, you just ultimately have to be very mindful of what you put out there and who you are with on social media with various gaming sites and otherwise. So it was a great way for him to reinforce that message. It was a reschedule from October, he unfortunately had to reschedule with us. So it's two years in a row that we've had Sergeant Rich here, and we look forward to continuing our partnership with him. Just as a regular public service announcement, marking period one has ended, and the parent portal is open now for parents to view marking period one grades, and we have put that information out to our parents. And a joint effort through our service squad and environmental club, you'll notice, I'm sure you probably have, at the entrance by Valley Road, we have two Planet Aid bins that are down there near the school entrance. So what those bins do is we collect clothing from the community. Clothing goes into those bins, they are sent to the resale store that's actually in Maryland through Planet Aid, where the best gently-used clothing is then bundled and sent to various locations around the country for sale at a very nominal fee. The rest of that clothing is bundled, and ultimately by the pound, it's used to make rugs, it's used to make blankets, baskets. And what Planet Aid does is they take the profits from what they make and they reinvest it into schools, which is awesome. And those schools are around the world, not just in our country. And consequently, what's great for us is we receive about five cents a pound to our school that goes back to our kids for everything that's donated. So it's really wonderful for our students who sit through that sometimes too, to be engaged in service and civic-minded activities here at RVS, and I'm really very proud of their efforts. So if you weren't aware, that's what happens with Planet Aid.
I may have donated five cents already.
I've donated quite a few bucks, you know, unbeknownst to people in my family. We're getting rid of this. I'm also pleased to say that, you know, particularly this time of year, our RVS community of professionals, our teachers, our administration, our staff, we always find it in their hearts to give to those that are less fortunate in our community and not as fortunate as we may be. So we've had our own food drive and monetary donations so that everyone may enjoy the season with their families, their friends, and their loved ones, and I'm just very, very proud of our efforts here at RVS and wish everyone a very, very, very happy Thanksgiving. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. And we've all had a chance to read the nurses' attendance reports and the comment, not the correspondence yet. That brings us to commendations. Dr. Angelillo?
Commercations. Congratulations to our coaches and student athletes on their excellent season this past fall. A fantastic performance by students in pre-K through 5th grade as they honored veterans at the Veterans Day concert last week. A huge round of applause to Mrs. Bartel for coordinating all of the details from the music, to the displays throughout the building, as well as the speakers. Many thanks to the teachers for their help in organizing and supervising the student entrances and exits and helping with decorations. We're deeply grateful to the many veterans who came to the concert and stayed to read and speak with our students about their experiences in the armed services. The conversations were very thoughtful and informative. Thank you to Mr. Ganley, to Mr. Zaleski, to Mr. Ketchabe, Mr. Ram, Mr. Colby, Mr. Dan Zaleski, and Mr. and Mrs. Logomeno. Thank you to all who helped make a fun and safe Halloween season for our district children, the Boot and Township Recreation, the Home and School Association, and the Boot and Township Education Foundation. Kudos to the September and October morning announcers, Lila Wills and Megan Pang in the 8th grade. Great job by those service squad members for keeping us up to date every day. Spotlight on student work for October. In preschool, to Musa Chadri and Zachary Swiant. In kindergarten, to Jacob Gonzalez, Emerson Lang, Slaughter Lee, Dominic McCrudden, excuse me, Ian McDonald, Riley Smith, and John Tapakis. In 1st grade, Isla Egan, Daphne Lutowski, Addison Shandell, and Grayson Truesdale. In 2nd grade, Lulu Chanel, Evelyn DiMartini, Cameron Guzman, Willa Hanson, Robert Hyman, and Mason McIntyre. And in 3rd grade, Michael Kern and Nathan Schneidcraft. To our Falcons of the Month for October, congratulations in 5th grade to Michaela Frochell. In 6th grade, Raphael Duchaine. In 7th grade, to Piper Hulse. And in 8th grade, to Ethan Mark. Those are our commendations.
Thank you. We all had a chance to read the correspondence, so that brings us to open session number one. The first public comment period will be limited to agenda items only, and the second public comment period will be open to any topic. Please be mindful that public comment periods are available to enable the public to get comments and feedback to the board. Personal matters and data to the operations are not appropriate subjects for board meetings. These can always be most effectively resolved with the appropriate staff members or administrators according to the chain command concept. Questions may be directed to the appropriate school personnel or board through email. Please state your name and address for the record, and all comments are limited to five minutes. Would anyone from the public wish to address the board on agenda items at this time? Yes?
I had a question. Andrew Mills, AP in Deer Trail. In the audit summary report, there's a list of recommendations, and the Allstate Ninety Set Number 10 says the prior year's recommendation regarding speech only students have been reported as LEP students on the application for state school aid has been resolved, not included in the current year's report. I was curious what that issue was and how it was resolved.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Murray, just quickly, it was lined up in the software in the wrong column, so we corrected it almost immediately after we found it, but the report was filed.
So it was an accounting issue, it sounds?
It was actually, it was in the wrong, there were a number of students that were just in the wrong column. They were all correct, but they were in the wrong column. So that was corrected, and that comment says that it didn't reoccur, which is a good thing.
So it occurred last year?
It occurred last year, and yeah, it was kind of a clerical thing, but it was corrected after we found it, but unfortunately it was filed.
Okay. Well, thank you, ma'am. And are there any other questions from the public on agenda items at this time? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the interim reports, starting with the Mountain Lakes Board of Education.
Okay, they had a meeting on November 6th, and they went over their NJSLA results, and also the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment, which is all 11th graders take. And, you know, as you'd expect, your levels are like ways to pass the state levels. In LA, they had 95% graduation-ready, and math, there is 85% graduation-ready. And one of the questions that was asked was like, what does that mean for the ones that didn't pass? And there's all kinds of alternative routes that you could meet the graduation requirements just by demonstrating that you took math four years would be one way to do them. So it was interesting. Their NJSLA results were very good. They had, overall, a lot of positive movement in the scores. There was one area for improvement was that the math, that we know in the ninth and eighth and ninth math, had some downward movement, which is, I think, why they are, they're reevaluating their math lineup. So they, in the middle school, the 3rd and 5th grade students, one of the nice, the good positive movements was that the IEP students increased to 62% passing or exceeding expectations, which was, they were very happy about. Middle school science has improved to pre-pandemic levels. And they are seeing, overall, they're focusing on reducing the 3, which is almost meeting expectations, and giving extra attention to those kids to get them in the 4 and 5 and meeting expectations. And so their intervention strategies that they're working on is just analyzing data, using Linkit Benchmark, looking at how students can answer specific type of questions that were getting them caught up, like multi-select scores. They're focusing on subscores in LA, vocab and literary conventions. And, oh, they're focusing on Tier 2 interventions, which is the pull-out support, providing targeted instruction for those, basically, and you've got a little extra support to boost them up. And they applied for and received, or they've gotten preliminary approval for a grant. It's called a high-impact tutoring grant, which will be provided by a third party, targeted at 3rd and 4th grade students. So it's during the day tutoring service for students who are identified. And they, there was a rigorous application process, and it was submitted in October. The next coffee talk for the superintendent is virtual, and it's at noon on December 13th. Regarding the personnel committee update was, the superintendent searches underway. The personnel committee is choosing, on their board, is choosing a firm to assist in the process. The goal is to have a new superintendent by June 30th, a contract signed by the end of March, in early January, go through the interview process. So it's a very tight schedule, and they're moving forward and identifying search firm currently. The committee will keep the community informed by the website and provide a timeline and details on the website, and ensure that all stakeholders, teachers, administration, students are involved. Regarding the Mountain Lakeset Foundation, they're having their 50/50 holiday raffle. Last year, the winner won $4,500. You can purchase tickets for a few more days to November 21st, and a lot of, a good portion of their funds go to support high school grants. And their spring fundraiser, they've named it, the theme is Man Knights, it's April 29th. They're accepting nominations for Teacher of the Year, and the nominations can be made up through November 17th. That information, I believe, has gone out by email as well, so if anybody needs the link, reach out to me or probably find it on the website. And that's pretty much it. I think Maxton covered the rest, all the highlights in sports, it's been phenomenal, lots of good energy, a lot of excitement, and the semifinals this weekend. And the other thing is the parent advisory committee is this Friday at 9:30, and parents send their questions to the grade representative, the parent grade reps, which Christine is one, for seniors, yeah? And then they meet and have a parent advisory committee with the principal and superintendent, or just?
Principal.
With the principals of their schools.
Great, thank you very much. That brings us to the New Jersey School Boards Association.
Good evening, everyone. New Jersey School Boards recently had their 2023 workshop, which we were represented by some folks from our own board, which was great to see. I decided to pull out some highlights from the keynote speakers who speak to the whole group. Highlights include New Jersey verbally committing to $11 billion in direct K through 12 aid. This represents an $832 million increase. Continued various statewide initiatives, supporting students from preschool through grade 12, including career technical education, high-impact tutoring programs, reading acceleration, professional integrated development program, the expansion of preschool education, climate change education, the New Jersey Partnership for Student Success Initiative, battling chronic absenteeism, youth mental health, and more. Couple of quotes I pulled from it that I thought were interesting. There was a, one of the speakers was Assemblyman Eric Simmensen. He said, "We have to get back to the nine core content standards. Teachers have been overwhelmed with mandates when they don't have time to teach the nine subject areas they are supposed to be teaching. We need to get back to basics and let teachers teach." And that sort of hit home for me and many others, as a board member for years and a parent for even more years. I want to continue to thank the teachers for all that they do, because it seems like every year they're asked to do more and more, just in addition to just teaching. So it was nice to hear a public official talk about, let's let our teachers just teach. The school funding formula was mentioned multiple times. This will be something to keep an eye on as it would potentially affect us. There was a question and answer period. The question was posed to legislators whether they would support raising the... the 2% property tax levy cap. And this Assemblyman, who is a member of the Education Committee and the Joint Committee on Public Schools, said that he supports raising the cap. So, obviously, this is something that would affect everyone in New Jersey, including us. Just remember, this is all rhetoric until it actually gets passed. But, interesting nonetheless. There were multiple comments on the teacher shortage, shortage of bus drivers, all sorts of other positions, school districts are struggling to fill. And as a reminder, this also affects us. Legislators, excuse me, legislators spoke about mental health support, and they believe that the current New Jersey statewide support services will remain in place. And in other news, the Department of Education has provided more information on the rapid literacy initiatives. Recently, the New Jersey Student Learning Standards for ELA were adopted by the Board of Education in October. I'm sure there will be more to come on that. And basically, it's promoting literacy and focusing on that in a evolved way, I suppose you could say. That's really it, as far as the highlights from the meeting. If anyone else who attended has anything they'd like to add, I would, I welcome you to do so at this time or later.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And that was the State Board of Education, not us.
Yeah, State Board of Education, not us.
Yes, I think there were at least three of us and two administrators that were there. I highly recommend it to, if you're able to make it, even for a short time. I was able to get there for two full days. I left early, early Tuesday morning and came back late Wednesday. I was able to attend full, two full days of it. And I know some other board members who got there as well. And, you know, I think, you know, they do a really great job in giving, you know, giving us professional development as board members and things we can bring back to help, help our district. And if anyone that didn't attend, you know, would like a booklet, I brought it. At the end of the thing, when they're all left over still, I grabbed a bunch. I did this last year, I'll get them out, you know, it gives you a flavor of what, you know, what they offer.
I just wanted to add, so I sent to you all the PCC, just for your own. If you have any questions about any of the sessions, I'd love to talk about them. I went to a school district PR, house school, one about climate surveys, one about augmented VR, how it can be implemented in classrooms, which was really neat. Creating positive school culture. Another one on the climate change and how to incorporate that into, or how it's being incorporated in the curriculum, or just, you know, how some environmental clubs are like asking their schools to take action into looking at 23 standards and calculating carbon footprints. And then there was one on communicating before referendum. So that was, had a lot of good tidbits. Something one point that was important to hear over and over again, I think, as a board member, is that we can present facts, but we can't say vote for it or, or vote against it. We just have to present the facts. And they showed examples of like once, I think it was actually precipitating where they were like, "Vote yes," and they had to, they got in ethics trouble just because of, you know, it was probably not intentional to do that, but something to be mindful of as we're talking to our community. And then one was like knowing our why, which was really interesting just from the board's perspective of like why we're all here, or we like the theme for retreat, you know, just kind of like understanding each other better and building up like knowing our why for our annual mission review and setting our focus. I don't know, it was interesting.
Very good.
I also attended, and I think it's really important to note that if you download the app on your phone, a lot of the slides from each workshop are readily available. And so I downloaded a bunch to distribute, and I can share if that's permitted on our drive, so you guys can see what I attended and get a gist as well. But it's really nice, most of the presenters give you their email, their phone number, and say please ask questions. So it's very transparent.
I think they're up there for, I forget how long they're up there, if they do go away eventually, but I think you can, I think you can log onto the workshop website and find them as well, on his computer. Well, thank you.
I'll read them.
Yes.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. That brings us to the Morris County School Boards Association.
Yes, the next meeting is on Thursday, December 7th. And we get lucky once again, because this meeting is at Morris Mills High School. So that's very, very local. Remember, the last one was out in Mountain Lake, so this is really unprecedented that we have two so close to us. The theme is defining boardmanship in controversy. The meeting begins at 6:00, with dinner, and then 6:45 agenda begins. I'm just curious if anyone here, besides Barry and I, are thinking about attending?
What, what day is it again?
It's Thursday, December 7th, so a couple weeks away.
My name? I just have to see, I have to check my calendar.
If you do decide to attend in person, we should all try to connect so we can, you know, grab a ticket.
Yeah.
Yeah, some students do that.
Can you sign up for, or is that something I have to do for?
I can always able to sign up.
You just sign up ourselves?
Yeah, there's, certain things you can and other things you can't.
It used to be you knew how to do it.
Yeah, there's no cost, since there's no cost, we're allowed to just log into our school boards account and sign up.
Thank you. And that brings us to the Educational Services Commission of Morris County. I attended their meeting last November 8th. Nothing noteworthy on the agenda, other than routine business. I know they're having some holiday activities at one of their schools that they run, a Thanksgiving luncheon, which is, I've attended that in the past. It's very, very good to go, they have, run one special ed school, they used to run two special education schools. One was for severe, like autism issues, and one was other, you know, severe special needs. And it's really, really interesting to go and meet, you know, meet the staff and the students at those schools to see what, what the school's about. That brings us to?
So the Educational Services Commission runs?
Mm-hmm.
Special education?
Yeah, it's basically, it's, the Ed Services Commissions are created by state statutes in all the county's in New Jersey. And many of them will run, they run shared services programs. Some of them, you know, run shared services programs statewide. So other, you know, anywhere in the state, there's some of them specialize in certain shared services. I guess they get approvals from the state DOE to do certain things. The one in Morris County used to run two special needs schools, now they have one because of the population decrease. But they also have shared transportation, so if you see Educational Services Commission, where they run Morris County, that's them. They also have staff members, like if you need like a half of a person for some of the months of the year, you know, it's hard to go out and hire someone for, you know, three months or six months. So they, you know, they hire someone full-time, and they can allocate them to many school districts to fill in, you know, places where you need them. So they do a lot of different shared services. Yeah, it's really, I think I went to a Morris County School Boards presentation where the Ed Services Commission did a presentation. Dr. Delarty, who's been there quite some time, is the superintendent. And that's why, you know, I guess each district, every year, each district in Morris County sends someone to the representative assembly, so there might be 30 or 40 of them. And then from those 40 people, they select, they vote on 15 people to be on their board of directors. So Boot and Township's been represented for many years on their board of directors as well. So they, and they have monthly meetings, it's very similar to a school district, they have a superintendent, business administrator, all the same employees that a school district has, and they just, but it's a unique set of things they do.
I thought it was just like shared, literally like shared service, you know, like I didn't realize they did all of that.
Yeah, no, it's a really, it's a really, it's a really interesting, it's really an interesting thing. You know, you would never know about it if you weren't on the board event and knew about that. Thank you. That brings us to the Boot and Township Special Education Parents Advisory Group.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. So the CPAG has been very busy. On October 24th, they, the parent reps of the CPAG had a successful meeting with the RBS administration, it was a good exchange of information and ideas. I think it went very well. On October 25th, Susan Miller held a structured literacy discussion at the Mountain Lakes Library. It was very well attended, I think they had over 25 people. And she did a really good job, I was there, of explaining the difference between balanced literacy and structured literacy. And I think it ties a little bit into what Jonathan was saying with the ELA standards. I think they're sort of heading in the direction, is my understanding, towards structured literacy. So it's good to understand the differences between the two and what structured literacy brings. And I thought it was very educational. She did a great job of explaining it. There may be a follow-up, if there is, I would encourage folks to attend if we are able to get her back. On November 14th, just last night, the CPAG had a presentation on occupational therapy-related services in special education, as well as a parent listening night that was held at the church. On 11/29, October 29th, the RBS will hold a full presentation. It's the overview of multisensory related techniques, I believe is my understanding, from 6:00 to 7:00 PM here at RBS. And then the next meeting is at the church on 12/19. It's the, it's basically, the CPAG meeting is the year-end leadership meeting. And that's, end of my report?
Must be multisensory thing coming up for the past.
I'm sorry, the multisensory is on 11/29, so, October 29th. It's here at RBS, 6:00 to 7:00 PM.
Yeah, that's, here in November, okay, that's why I forgot about that.
Sorry, I should have said, thank you, sorry, thank you very much, yeah.
And that brings us to the Boot and Township Education Foundation.
Oh, that's not me anymore.
Oh, that's right.
We're meeting tomorrow morning.
Yeah, meeting tomorrow morning. On that note, I was just going to say that the Mountain Lakes CPAG, so relevant for us who have anyone who I think plays school, they're, they're having a meeting?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, thank you, yeah. Do you know, it's like 9:30?
It's at the library, Mountain Lakes Library.
At Mountain Lakes Library, what time?
Yeah, 7 o'clock.
Thank you.
I think anybody's welcome to attend, especially children in Boot and Township School District or Mountain Lakes that are able to attend that meeting. Sorry.
Thank you very much. I know it immediately follows the parent, a parent meeting for Stoney. That brings us to the Rockaway Valley Home and School Association.
I was unable to attend, and there are no notes quite yet, but Laura did want me to say that the holiday was ours and I'm at school. I don't know the date, but that was just what she wanted to disseminate. Do you have it?
It will just be early December, I think it's the first full week in December. I'll double-check.
11, 12, and 13.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. And that brings us to the Boot and Township on Booton.
The only thing I have to report out is that this upcoming Saturday, November 18th, from 2:00 to 4:00 is the Rabies Clinic. And that's held at the DPW Garage behind Unesco Building. And that's all.
Thank you. And lastly, the Boot and Township meeting.
So the meeting officially got their bronze certification, so New Jersey Sustainable Jersey Certification. So that was, that was a big endeavor, and we're looking forward to what we can do for silver. Now that we have the certification, we can apply for grants. So we're looking at trying to get additional funds for maintaining the garden and for potentially doing another green fair, because it was so successful. So continuing some of the things we did right, and then trying to do some more education in the community. And I wanted to thank the school. They highlighted how nice the garden looked on Facebook, and that was, that effort was led by Mrs. Gobert and up to Holland and Skatering, which were awesome. Yeah, looking good, getting ready for another year.
Great, thank you. And that brings us to Facilities Transportation.
So there was no meetings since our last meeting, but Mr. Murray, we are open for Monday for 4:30 for our next meeting.
Thank you. And that brings us to Facilities, motion number one. May I have a motion, please? Is there a second?
A second.
Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? If not, the questions on the adoption of facilities, motion number one. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed say no. Any abstentions? And that brings us to Finance, motions one through eight. May I have a motion, actually, the Finance Committee did not meet since the last meeting. I'm not sure, maybe they're not scheduled on, on, but at this point, we have Finance motions one through eight. May I have a motion, please?
I'll move.
Is there a second? Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? If not, the questions on the adoption of Finance motions one through eight. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed say no. Any abstentions? And that brings us to Personnel.
Yes, at our last committee meeting, we discussed Personnel two, four, and five. And also, with the meeting goes, is an overview of the responsibilities of the Personnel Committee, so that is in the shareholder. I think my table is open, so that means we'll have to.
Great, thank you. And with that, may I have a motion for Personnel, motions one through five?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? If not, the questions on the adoption of Personnel motions one through five. Mrs. O'Callaghan?
Mrs. Varda?
Yes.
Mr. Brandon?
Yes.
Mrs. Cabana?
Yes.
Mrs. Hermy?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. LeVar?
Yes.
Mrs. McBride?
Yes.
And Mrs. Nowicka? Motion carried.
Thank you. That brings us to Program Curriculum, the Program Curriculum. Many met yesterday, so I did not get a chance to put notes out. And as I thumb through my pile of paper, we briefly, we began our meeting with discussing special education topics. We're in the next upcoming meetings, we want to get a good overview of the special education in Section 504 Programs. Pretty much had an open discussion about the facets of the special education program for the first part of the meeting. And then we also discussed other items that I think Dr. Angel already discussed in his report. We talked about Sergeant Tom Rich's presentation on November 13th, the upcoming American Education Week Parent Day this Friday. And also, some other upcoming ideas for some parent chats. We did discuss the New Jersey Learning Standards that may be changing for both math and language arts. And our next meeting is December 7th at 8:00 AM. And with that, may I have a motion for Program Motion One? Is there a second? Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? If not, the questions on the adoption of Program Motion Number One. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed say no. Any abstentions? That brings us to Policy.
The policies for first read is what we discussed at our last meeting on November 7th. The policy 4151, 4251, that was up for the first read in September. And then New Jersey School Boards came out with their sample policy, which we will be adopting that version, and it has a new title, if you noticed, and it's now in alignment with the law. Policy 5131.1 with HIB, there's no change to the policy itself. In July of this year, the New Jersey State Board of Education released new and revised forms for school districts to use when reporting HIB incidents. So the only revisions to the policy was references to the new forms, along with how and when they're to be used. The next policy, 51315, Violence and Vandalism. In August of '22, a bill was signed in New Jersey which requires boards of education to develop and adopt a policy which establishes a threat assessment team. And this is a requirement of all districts. And then the last one, 6142.2 ESL, there was no changes to the policy, just additions to the legal references in the policy. And that is all to report.
Great, thank you. And that brings us to Policy Motion Number One. May I have a motion, please?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
A second.
Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? If not, the questions on the adoption of Policy Motion Number One. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed say no. Any abstentions? And before we move on to session number two, the Governance Committee met on November 2nd for its first meeting. We, we started our, our meeting with, the agenda was based on a slide in one of the New Jersey School Boards' presentations on committees. And they had a slide on the Governance Committee. So we, we just discussed the superintendent evaluation process, and we're going to look at that in May, June. A board self-evaluation, which actually comes up later in our agenda for that. New board member orientation, new member orientation. We reviewed information provided to our current board members. I think someone was going to provide some information either from school boards or another school district, and we're going to just solicit input from our other board members to see if there's any improvements that we might want to make to that process. We discussed board professional development. I sent an email out September 29th, but we only have one more meeting left this year, so we'll send another one out in January or whoever it is.
We received, I sent an email out to Charlene Peterson. We got some great information from her on just new board orientation.
Oh, great.
Yeah, she sent some great material, like.
Excellent, yeah, so we'll review that at our next, our next committee meeting, which is great. So we have, we have one more meeting left in December. We're, we have Charlene Peterson scheduled at 6:30 for the December meeting. What we decided in Governance Committee would be a good idea would be to do a board self-evaluation. It used to be required every year, but now it's optional, but it is a best practice. And I think Mrs. Hermy had brought up this suggestion in a prior meeting. So we all agree that that might be a good idea, which is like when we evaluate ourselves. So we can, you know, see if we can, you know, see what we're doing right and see what we can improve. And I think Mrs. Hermy had brought up this suggestion in a prior meeting. So we all agree that that may be a good idea, which is like when we evaluate ourselves. So we can, you know, see if we can, you know, see what we're doing right and see what we can improve. And that's always a good thing. And there's an annual board calendar, there's a sample on the New Jersey School Boards' website, we looked at that. There's a lot of things listed there. Many of the things either are automatically done or by agenda. There's other things that really don't fall under the board, board rule, it seems, but they're in the calendar, but you know, it's something you can look at. I put the notes in the drive, you can all take a look at that. But most of the, I think, I believe we cover all, all the things that are in the calendar pretty well. We looked at board leadership development, if anyone wants to be in a leadership role, you know, go to attend New Jersey School Boards' training, ask questions, volunteer for, you know, positions, you know, with leadership positions, chairs of committees and all that good stuff and learn, because you always have to have a, a plan, you know, a succession plan for, you know, whoever would like to continue being a board leader. We looked at board goals, so the Governance Committee thought it would be a good idea that we develop action plans for our board goals and that we developed and see if we meet them at the end of the year. And then, and these are all items that were in the sample agenda for our Governance Committee, that's why I'm just going one by one here. And then lastly was board bylaws. There's a series 9,000 policies that cover bylaws that both the Policy Committee and the Governance Committee could look at those and see if there's anything that, you know, is, you know, anything that's there that needs changes or not. And I had other notes, but I didn't bring it. So, but that's a good summary with that. I will go to open session number two. The second public comment period will be open to any topic. Please be mindful that public comment periods are available to enable the public to give comments and feedback to the board. Personal matters and day-to-day operations are not appropriate subjects for board meetings. These can always be most effectively resolved with the appropriate staff members or administrators according to the chain of command concept. Questions may be directed to the appropriate school personnel or board through email. Please state your name and address for the record and all comments are limited to five minutes. Would anyone from the public wish to address the board on any matter? Okay, if not, that brings us to old business. Do we have any old business to come before the board? Do we have any new business to come before the board?